It's just didn't there. Yeah.
All right, ready?
Well, it's six o'clock on October twenty sixth, and I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council Work Session to order. Uh, get everyone here is present. Um, and with that, I'll also point everyone to our land acknowledgement, says we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people, the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Naus- Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Scrux in North Rising. Um, and with that, can I get approval of tonight's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as published?
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? On fair motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you want to post, uh, motion, the unanimous carries, we have an approved agenda. First on approved agenda is our water systems plan. Right.
So, we've been working on our water system plan for quite some time, and we've finally in the final draft mode, and ready to be sent to Department of Health for their approval. So we just wanted to give you a brief update on what it is and a refresher, I don't know if some of you were have done these before, maybe not, so. Go through a couple of quick slides, guys, ask any questions you might have and. Okay. So basically, the water system plan is, it's sort of like this, the comp plan for a water utility. So it documents our water systems capabilities, it provides long-term planning for the utility. It is a Department of Health regulated plan, so we are required to do these based on state law. It's on a ten-year cycle. And they serve as both an engineering and a planning document, so you'll see planning kinds of things in there, but there's also a lot of very technical engineering that's involved. So the general contents that are in there is, you know, there's general descriptions of just the water system in general, how it came to be. We have policies, we have growth and demand forecasts. We normally do a ten and twenty-year outlook for growth projections. We do supply planning, so trying to schedule when new sources need to come online. We look at wellhead protection, source water protection, the quality of the water. Distribution network to make sure that people are getting fire flow and proper service pressures. And then we look at our operation and maintenance programs, staffing needs. And then finally, we take all the projects that we come up with, put them into a capital project plan, and then do the financing portion of it, which includes capital, project financing, and just general operational rates and operating. So the plan kind of starts with the service area description, description of the water system and the service area. So you'll see this shaded area is, that is our retail water service area. It doesn't really fit cleanly with the city limits or the urban growth area. There's some areas certified to PD within our urban Jordan area. We have some areas outside of our UGA that we serve, like down in Nisqually Valley. These are generally remnants from other systems that we've acquired over the years. So that's kind of, that builds the foundation for, you know, where is our water system and.
Do we have a line that connects from Nisqually up to us?
We do, it run, there is a line that runs all the way down Silicon Road down into the valley there. But there's also two small wells and reservoirs, so that zone can operate on its own, and we can also supply it from the main Lacey system.
Let me acquire those, those systems outside the UGA or outside of our service or because of emergency situations or?
Uh, Nisqually, yes, there was a help meeting down there. I believe Department of Health sort of asked us very politely to.
Then along the same area where the stormwater, uh, line that we, uh, yeah, like still, now that's down by.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't know if that's the outfall is kind of down in that area or not. So then the next section we go into is just policy section, so that's where you'll find things like conditions of service. You know, if somebody wants service from us, generally, you know, we won't allow them to have their own private exempt well, so conditions like that. We'll find those in there. We'll find the design criteria, so a lot of the reference standards that we're trying to meet, whether state laws, regulations that we're adhering to. You'll find general sizing criteria, like how much storage we want to have for the system that helps provide a level of service, what minimum pressures we want to operate at, things of that nature. We cover the fire protection standards, so how much fire flow we intend to serve for different areas of the city and for different uses. And then we address consistency with other government planning, county and other things like that. Then finally, there's the financial part, which covers billing practices, how water rates are set, general facility charges, things like that. So then we kind of start getting into the actual planning and engineering part of the plan. So when we do our demand forecasting, that's sort of what builds the foundation for the rest of the effort. So we start with our historical number of service connections, and then we get growth rates from TRPC. And we take our existing accounts and grow them by the rates that they tell us are appropriate for our area. Then we convert that into, this is ADD, that's average day demand, so what we're trying to do is make that we're trying to go from number of customers into volume of water.
What is DSL?
DSL is distribution leakage. So every water system, no matter how good it is, it's going to lose a certain amount of water just through general leakage. So Department of Health requires us to look at DSL or distribution system, we can just see how much water we're losing due to breaks in pipes or just leaks that might be out there. They set a standard of ten percent, so.
So, over three thousand gallons, am I reading that right and?
Yeah, that, so that would be equivalent residential units, so the, so we we use a ten percent figure for planning purposes, because that's the upper limit of what you're supposed to have. But that volume of water would equate to roughly thirty-seven single-family homes, thirty-seven hundred. So, so when we build them, the greater demand projections, we do allocate some water that may be lost for, it could be leakage, it could be theft, it could be metering inaccuracies, types of that nature.
At one time, it used to be a pretty high number, but we have actually brought that number quite a bit down over the years.
And we're not actually at ten, ten percent is the, you use ten percent for planning purposes, but we're not actually using ten percent, right?
Yeah, if you're over ten percent, then Department of Health will kind of force you into coming up with some kind of mitigation plan to address that. I believe we're around eight, eighty, yeah.
That's a three-year average going after. And, and DSL isn't just system leakage, it could be that, it could be a number of things. It's, uh, under registering in the meters, it's, it's a number of things.
It's anything that can't be accounted for. So that's kind of how we build the the quantity of water that we need, we come up with. We're everything into basically single-family units, a single-family home, and then figure out how much water we need based on that. So, for example, we have multi-family accounts and current accounts, so we have conversion factors for those, you know. Your standard multi-family connection is equivalent to roughly five-point-six single-family homes, some are more, some are less, but on average, that's kind of where it works out to.
Is that dependent on how many units in the multi-family, like a bigger apartment complex, even if a bigger number ever does now?
So one connection might be well VRUs, another connection might just be a triplex or something like that.
Okay.
So that is an average for all of our customers that are in that class.
Got it.
So once you've got the planning numbers, you kind of go back to historical water usage, and use that as your big forward. This graphic here just shows variation throughout this year on a monthly basis, you can see how in the winter months, not, not a lot of water production, and then around May and June, it really ramps up to that July and August peak, and then soon as you hit mid-September, the demand just starts coming right back down. And this, this one here, four-point-two, that sort of shows the variation between average day demand and max day demand. So max data man would be like your, your normal summer day, average day demand is probably more like a early spring and a usage. And what we've found is our ERU value is, or like a single-family residence. Using a planning value of a hundred and eighty-one gallons per day, that's on average what they tend to use, so we use that as our basis to apply to the number of ERUs. So this probably demonstrates it a little bit better here, the greens, uh, the average day demand. Kind of purplish, you have maximum day demand, and you can see how, you know, back here in the twenty-twenty era, which is about when we started actual planning effort. We were, we're running about seven million gallons a day on average, and we expect that to grow to roughly ten million gallons a day, by now we get to twenty-forty, where's the summer time demand increases to like twenty million gallons a day. So you can see there's a huge seasonal difference there.
Irrigation.
Yes, irrigation is a huge factor now.
How much do we get, of that do we get back through filtration? Is there an estimate?
Through, uh, I mean, everything that's infiltrated. I mean, it goes back into the ground, but I really couldn't say.
But we get, we get some replenishment.
So you're talking about irrigation?
Yeah.
People like just turn on the sprinkler, forget about it, right? So then you're probably getting some water recharging off of that way.
Yeah.
People who care about not wasting water or not spending too much money, they'll irrigate at agronomic rates, and so it's just enough to get that in its own, and you don't get the water going back to the one.
So then as we move farther into the plan, then we start talking about water use efficiency, and this is where the DSL thing is really covered is in this chapter. So the whole point of this is to make sure that we're being as efficient as possible with the water and making sure that comes from the ground and gets to the customers, and we're not losing any, and making sure that it's for appropriate purposes. We've already touched on distribution system leakage. And then we have, then we also set water conservation goals, this should actually be one gallon per day for ERU per year. So one of our conservation goals is to bring that, that base ERU number down, that hundred and eighty-one gallons per day, per ERU. Realistically, you can only bring that down so far, but our goal is to have it come down by one gallon per day, per year. And some of the, some of the ways we do that is through education. We have the tiered rate structure, that's a conservation measure. We have outdoor commercial rebates, we do water-saving kits, and then uh, system side, we do leak detection, so we have staff that go out to, for leaks in the pipes. Sometimes they find some pretty big ones, but, you know, some of the soil around your drains really well, and it may not come to the surface. So one of the ways they find that is they've got headphones, they, they hook up a device and they listen for it.
Have we seen that number come down?
The number of leaks?
Yeah, no, the, I know we were saying it, come down one gallon. Have, have we seen it come down at all over the, over the years?
Yeah, over the years we have, in fact, I would say the last time we did our water system plan, we were up over two hundred gallons per day for ERU, so.
Oh, wow.
So in the last ten years, we've made a lot of progress on that.
That ain't significant, it's like.
Yeah, even going back farther than that, if it's, it was significantly higher. So, so we have made a lot of progress.
Oh, great.
So then we start looking at, now that we know how much water we need and when, we start looking at how to actually accomplish that. So this graphic is a little busy, but down here you got your average data man, so you can think of that in terms of your annual water right, so, yeah. That many millions of gallons per day that you need to serve, and then this line here is how much, how much water right do you have on a average daily basis? So you can sort of see this sort of stair steps along as we bring future sources online, and main point there is you want to stay ahead of the demand line. Same with maximum day demand, so that's your summer day, that's your, your ability to pump the water right now on an instantaneous basis. And that is probably where we struggle the most. This line up here goes our allocated water right for instantaneous demand, it's way up here, we're in good shape on how much we're allowed to use. But we do struggle with how much we physically carry, that's, that's a function of just the wells themselves, some can't actually produce their full water right, or various things like that, so. So that's where some projects come in with replacements, rehabs, things of that nature. So we're really trying to set up projects to sort of stair step and stay just ahead of that without we don't want to get too far ahead, but we don't want to risk being behind.
So we don't really have an issue then with the actual water rates, we're in good shape on water rates for the.
For the time being.
For the next couple of decades.
Yeah, we did actually take an extended look at demand projections, so. So normally a plan like this, you would do a ten-year and a twenty-year planning horizon. We did look at a fifty-year horizon, which has a lot of what-ifs and guesses as far as what growth looks like. But I I believe that was around twenty-fifty is where we started to get to where we're going to start needing water again. You know, uh, assuming those projections are right and consumption patterns stay the same. So it, it may not be that much longer, I mean, getting water rights or finding water sources takes a long time, so it may not be that much longer before we need to start looking, but in general, twenty-fifty is about the horizon we're looking at before there's another crunch.
Missed to stay ahead of that one.
Right, so, so you would want to start fairly early, because it is a long.
Well, we don't really implement our, our reclaimed water at all, and so at some point you hope your reclaimed water can, can take part of some irrigation.
And that would be part of the strategy, yeah. And then over here, let's just sort of list some of the, some of the projects that are already planned, some of these are already done. Uh, probably the biggest thing coming is to do supply levels, we built a Mars Road well. Thinking, probably need new wells on that site to make it produce its full water right, and then we also have one at every campus. So then along with the sources, we look at their water quality, generally, water quality issues are pretty well set out by Department of Health, and they, they tell you exactly what you need to monitor for, what you need to treat. We currently take ninety routine samples, so that's actually a typo in the slide, that's sort of indicative of how quickly we've been growing. So, so the number of routine samples we take every month is based on your population served and actually recently had to start taking a couple more samples every month.
Do you know approximately how many wells are in the city of Lacey that we don't service, like private wells or community wells?
I don't know, there's I don't know if there's a ton of them that are active, but historically, there, there used to be exempt wells all over the place. Department of Ecology keeps a well log database that I use sometimes, and when you zoom in on it, you'll just see wells everywhere, but it's also exploratory wells for soils investigations and infiltrates, so there's a lot of holes that have been punched in the ground, not all of them are drinking water wells.
Still I'm monitoring about a lot of times with, uh, development activity, the permitting process, if there is a well on the property, then it's not going to be a monitoring well, then it'd be looked at being properly abandoned as part of the development. So you see a lot of our, you know, greenfields that developed over the last twenty years, a lot of them have been, uh, either converted to monitoring wells or, or abandoned, properly abandoned.
I'm just curious to know what steps would we take to ensure that we have the capacity to service a city thirty, forty years down the road? And if that would be something that the city would consider as the, like, I, I consume from a, um, neighborhood well, community well. I was just a curious question.
Yeah, and I don't know the exact number of how many of those are out there, there, there are several.
There, there used to be a lot more, like my neighborhood used to be on its own well too, that's so, because every little system out there, if you had an older neighborhood, you didn't get out of your own water system, it wasn't till, it's one of the reasons why your system, our system was so expensive, because you had to piece together all these different systems into one cohesive system, and it's hasn't, it's been expensive to do.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and we do plan to service them if, if and when the time comes. Generally, we would assume that if it's a well that has a water right, that we would attempt to acquire that and transfer it to one of our other sources. So I would, hopefully would sort of pay for itself, at least on the water balance.
And that one, um, property that potentially could be a servicing well?
The Judd Hill area, you're talking about the Judd Hill area?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, we're doing that exploratory well, that's just if it's, uh, to be productive, yes.
Where are we at on that? Uh, they're testing it this week or next week, so that, that well is, and we've looked at some of the well logs, or at least the hydrogeologist has.
Does it look good so far?
Seems promising.
Good.
But, yeah, like the Judd Hill, well, that's one of it. Historically, we've really struggled with getting the full water right out of it. I believe the water right is six hundred gallons a minute, and about the best we can get out of it is three hundred, so. So we really need to make sure that we're getting the full production out of that.
So here we're going through the process to obtain the last set of water rights, an exhaustive search was done. Just because there's a well there doesn't mean there's a right associated with it.
Right.
And just because there is a little, uh, you know, smaller water provider, doesn't mean that it has any value to us. Like Friendship Water District, which was a little one that served about twenty-some customers over here off of Fourteenth, and, you know, near Golf Club Road. They, you know, their, their well was failing, they had a right associated with it. They came to us, they formed the ULID to connect the city water, but those wells had no value to us.
So we obtained the water right when we did that, right? Oh, no.
The, the water right was not easy for us to transfer, it would have been a whole lot more work. Water right has to exist in a quarter-quarter section.
Oh, gotcha.
So if you want to transfer it out of that quarter-quarter section and put it on one of our existing wells, then you have to go to Department of Ecology and say, how do I go about doing that? And they say, well, you'll have to mitigate because it's different water, different elevation, or intercept different water to the stream or something, and it's like, no. So you're starting from scratch, we're not mitigating all over again.
Gotcha, not worth the cost, yes.
Okay, and then, so we'll finish off water quality with you know, a lot of our wells are pretty decent, but as we go into some of the deeper rock first, it, which is where our a lot of our newer water rights are, out in the Hawks Prairie area, those wells are commonly high in iron and manganese, which require treatment.
How far down is deep considered to be?
Generally, the ones that have iron and manganese problems are I would say deeper than four hundred. Out in Hawks Prairie, they're around six hundred, six fifty, well, seven over by the fire station there, that one is I believe about four hundred, four hundred and fifty PD, so. But it's that, that deeper zone tends to have poor. Then of course, we have the new pH adjustment facilities that are coming online. The Beechcrest one is currently under construction, and then we have the West Side ones that we'll be going to add shortly, I believe, so. So we've got a lot of water supply work going on. And then another part of the plan that we do is we update our wellhead protection plan. So over here, right, you can see where all the different wells are, and then these color-coded areas are the capture zones. So the water that is actually coming to that well when we're pumping it, that's, that's what these colors represent, so the sort of agenda there, that would be your six-month capture zone, so the water is coming. Any water that infiltrates there takes about six months to get into that well, and then out to the treating areas, ten-year capture zone, so. So that helps inform like where different areas of concern might be for contamination and things of that nature. That, that helps to inform land use decisions on, you know, things like gas stations, you want to make sure that they're not real close to where you're actually capturing your groundwater, so that that's one thing we do as part of this plan, and that this is just sort of an inventory of our different sources.
One of Olympia's largest sources of water is over, over there too, uh, you have to account for that in this, oh, uh.
We don't map their sources in this plan, but I well, Rick might know the land use thing a little better than me, but I would think if we knew of a well and capture zone that overlapped into the city limits, I think we would account for that in land use applications.
Coordinate review and throughout the city of Olympia per comment, and, and that's more point of view information would be to consider.
Because they have that, all the wells already, but the, the limits of the town, where is that, where are their wells at?
The, the.
Yeah, they're kind of down in this.
Yeah.
General area.
Hester Springs.
Yeah, and it's a similar offer, so it probably has a similar shape. Although maybe larger than our control site, so probably, they probably capture a lot down in here, I'm assuming. I've not actually seen their wellhead protection areas.
When that application came in for what is now the QFC, yes, they. When that application came in for what is now the QFC yes station, the one that recently opened.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, obviously we're concerned about our wells down there near Safeway and Kansas City, but Olympia also has wells. You know, not too far from there to the west, so they were notified of that application. So, yeah, the core of our.
Yeah, and that kind of speaks to the like old cap city, the sewer and things of that nature, you can see how. It will run that agenda right in that area, which is part of the driver. After that, we're going to go into the little system analysis, which is really the distribution system, these are just figures to sort of. Map out, you know, what the utility looks like. This is more of a vertically correct scale of wells and storage tanks. So you can sort of see how there's some are shallow, some are real deep.
Excuse me, could I ask you to project your voice, it's really hard to hear.
Okay. So part of the system analysis. We do the distribution system modeling, so we have a computer model that maps out all the pipes in the old city. And we basically do field testing in different spots to calibrate it, make sure it's accurate. And then we do fire flow testing, we do pressure monitoring. And we look for projects that need to be done, so. So we'll run the model, look for any fire flow deficiencies, like each little pipe will say. Pipes in this area need to provide seven hundred and fifty gallons a minute, pipes in this area might need to provide fifteen hundred gallons a minute, so we run through the whole city. Look for anything that's deficient and then that will help inform some of our either waterline upsizing or looping projects. We then start looking at storage analysis, which this is kind of a good figure to give you an idea of. How we come up with how much storage we need in our tanks, so. In a general standpipe, which would be any tank, like say the Hawks Prairie tank or the still come tank where you just have the standard tank. You're gonna have. A portion of the tank at the bottom that is dead storage, it's basically unusable because it's too low to provide. Enough pressure to be valuable, you know, so that that first part of the tank basically just. Is no good, it's just holding up water. The next section of the tank is generally your fire flow and standby, so you'll reserve a section of that tank just committed for. If you have a big fire, you need that storage to put out a fire, or if you had extended power outages and not enough supply. That's what some of your standby emergency storage is for. Then on top of that, you have equalizing storage, which covers your daily variation, so. You know, everybody gets up in the morning, takes a shower, you'll see that instantaneous demand rise and then. Late at night, everybody goes to bed and you'll see that come down, so that's equalizing storage sort of buffers that out. And of course, at the very top, you have a little, a small sliver that is basically just enough to let you turn wells on and turn them off and not upset things.
Is the tank actually separated out like that internally?
No, no.
Illustration.
Yeah, just for illustration purposes.
Yeah, but but they are, the volumes are sort of stacked that way and that's how you add up. How much total volume do we need in this tank?
They have seismic seismic bracing and stuff like that.
So, sort of, yes, in the past, we have been running sort of a storage deficit, so that's sort of driven the tuning storage tanks. One of them has already built the Hawks Prairie Sister Standpipe, and then we also have one down in in Telco Loop that's being built now, so. Those were driven by some of these storage analysis. Another project we we're getting ready to do is adding auxiliary power to some of our well sites, so. Very few of our sites right now have generators, so when power goes out, they're not making water, so. One of our strategies is to add generators there, so we know they'll run, that can help reduce the amount of emergency storage we need. It makes our water live.
When's the Intelco Loop coming online?
Spring? I'm hoping spring, early summer.
That's really going to change the pressure in that area too, isn't it?
It will not change the pressure much at all, you probably not enough to notice, it'll it'll help stabilize it, but it won't raise the pressure. So after we've gone through all that stuff, then we put together our capital improvement program, basically all the. Capital projects that are driven by growth or repair, replacement, all those things. And at the end of the day, what we're kind of looking for is to make sure that our limiting capacity, which is an analysis we do, we go and look at. How many units can we serve based off of story, you know, like can we serve based off of supply, like can we serve based off of. Maintaining water pressure, do that calculation and make sure that. At the end of the planning period. The projects we have in there are able to serve as much or more than what we anticipate for growth. Then we do a short section on operation and maintenance, this sort of just inventories, the size of the system and our assets. And here we sort of identify, we go through some of our general maintenance programs, we have. U F programs, valve replacement, we have hydrant programs, so like we go around and inspect every hydrant every year. Make sure that they're functional and ready to go. Source meter calibration. Water resources section manages cross connections, so all the different programs that we do that are not just capital, but they're. Programmatic in nature.
I I know I asked this question when we were talking about the budget, but do we do we know when we're going to finally make a decision on on our meters? On what meters we're going to go with and when all that's gonna happen?
All right, can you repeat that last part?
No, I just, I know I just asked the same question about our budget, when when we're going to make a decision about the meters.
Sure, we're.
Maybe we talked about in this plan.
Right, I think we're going to bring a an update back to the council before the end of the year. We're actually in a planning state right now in terms of what policies and what system improvements seem to be made, so hopefully before this body before then the year.
Okay.
We do have a project and funding built into the capital improvement program for meters in this plan, so it is, it was built into. Which that sort of finishes off there, we do the financial plan, which we brought down to you as, I would say in twenty twenty one. With the multi-rate proposal, so at that time, we looked at the fiscal policies, the operating. Facility charges, we we've already made those adjustments and then of course the the rates. So that's pretty much all I've got so far, we've gone through the public review phase, we've done CETA. We've sent it to other jurisdictions looking for comments. Haven't gotten hardly anything back, which is pretty normal. Um, we went through the planning commission, so we've checked that box. And the next step is to send it over to Department of Health for their review, which. That will likely take at least three months, maybe more, depending on what kind of comments and things they have. And then once, once they've reviewed it and they are ready to approve it, they will ask us to adopt. The plan and then after we send them the. Copy of the ordinance or whatever mechanism we use to adopt it, I believe it's an ordinance. Then they will send us the approval letter and then that's done.
What you need from us today is authorization to send this to Department of Health, correct? So we need a motion for that, I assume, or no?
Yeah, we mainly. Want to make sure that council is supportive of it and, you know, as it goes through that process, that when we come back for it.
Does it need an official motion?
I need an actual motion?
I don't know if you need an actual motion, just a good consensus of moving it forward for, because ultimately, you go through the Department of Health review, comes back for the final action by council.
I've been you had your hand up.
Yeah, so in the operations and maintenance section, it says essentially that you, based on the analysis you did, you're about two people understaffed. And once the reclamation facilities come online, you need another person, so you're about three people short. That, are we going to see a proposal in the budget for those positions?
Yes, so those positions are in the budget.
We made requests that were approved.
Okay, so that's already incorporated in the draft budget.
The position, additional position, positions.
What's further out? Yeah, okay.
You have something, Mike? I just wanted to say. Thumbs up or whatever, want to hit that for me?
I think you just need, I think.
There's one more question.
Go ahead.
Related to another piece of the executive summary, it says that we should establish a maximum decline in a specific capacity of well, so the Judd. Well, right, we're not getting out of that nearly what we should have been and we're looking for a new spot, we've got a new spot. Is this essentially just to come up with a. An operating, a standard operating procedure for when we're not getting enough out of a well that we shut looking for a new one, that there's some defined threshold so that we know we need to start looking for something new?
Yeah, I think that specific part was referring to like a decline in a well's efficiency, so what we want to do is. Look for a set point where, okay, this well has declined in efficiency to a certain point that we need to rehabilitate it. And if it can't be rehabilitated, we need to start looking for locations for replacements. Because a lot of our existing well sites are actually very small pieces of property.
Yeah.
And there just isn't physically space there to add another.
Instead of waiting until it's an emergency, we have just a a line that we draw where we say this is, we need to go look for something new.
Right, because most of these are going to require property acquisition, so then you have to start looking for where's a good, good place to do that. And it can be very expensive.
I think it's more and more difficult because a lot of these wells where when we we drilled them, the well protection area was a lot smaller than the new well protection area is. And so um that's becoming a lot more issues, we get especially as we have more density. Now we need a bigger area for a new well, and so you have to decide, yeah, you have to decide, you take the the well down and rehab it, or to drill another well, and so it's, yeah. I'm glad you guys are all here now. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, all right. So, Alyssa, Jeff, can you probably correct? Next is Alyssa and Jeff for the public records training and the summary report.
Thank you, council, um for our next item, we have Jeff Myers, attorney and public record expert, going to lead us in a public records training.
Well, thank you for uh inviting me here, it's been a while since I had a chance to. Do any public records training in in Lacey um at the council level at least, um and. We want to go over what you need to know about the Public Records Act, uh because of. In large part, the risk of liability and just the the need to manage uh public records and be accountable to the public. What I would like to cover is some of the costs and some of the risks. Uh that we encounter under the Public Records Act, specifically the litigation risk. I was a simple land use lawyer for the first half of my career and then in 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 the early part of this century. Public records sort of took over my practice and and I'm probably about seventy five percent public records. Uh oriented uh basis right now, um so it's a lot of litigation and a lot of focus from the public. About how to use the Public Records Act and an awareness of what the government is not doing well. Uh that creates that risk, uh want to go over some of the Public Records Act basics, what is subject to the Public Records Act? Uh how requests are received and what the city's obligations are responding to those requests. Talk about searching for responsive records and then focus a little bit on how that impacts you as council members. Um because public records requests are can and can be directed to records held by uh. Individual council members, and then what is a personal record versus a public record? Uh and what do you have an obligation to produce in a public records response versus those things which are personal and you wouldn't have an obligation? And then talk a little bit about these things that confound our worlds. Um and uh allow us to be connected all the time. Uh and have, and we carry, but which also can carry public records on them. And what are our obligations regarding how we manage those personal devices that we might have? And then talk a little bit uh at the conclusion about some of the exemptions that apply um. And how those exemptions get applied, that's not the right one. So, um. This is just a a little uh advanced peek at some of the J L R data, and I know Alyssa's going to talk to you a little bit more about that. But this is from the the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one J L R reports about the total costs in the state of Washington. Uh in responding to uh public records, um. Millions of staff hours, one point three million staff hours in twenty twenty one with over a hundred million dollars spent fulfilling public records requests. Um, a hundred and ninety two and a half million dollars statewide, just simply on managing and retaining public records. So there is a a lot of cost statewide, and this shows really, I think, the commitment that the state of Washington has. To government transparency and being accountable to our citizens uh under the Public Records Act.
Especially at the municipal level, not so much at legislative level.
Well, that has, that has gradually been changing.
Sorry.
At least the state legis, this, you know, it it was a case brought here in Thurston County. That held that the legislature is subject to the Public Records Act and that is, and there is lit litigation right now. Trying to figure out whether there is an immunity for certain legislative records and we'll see how that case comes out, I'm not working on that case though. Talk about litigation risks. We have seen a an explosion in litigation and and as a litigator on behalf of municipalities. It took over my practice, um but there are incentives in the Public Records Act for litigation. Uh larger penalty awards we we have seen uh recently in uh. We had, there is one requester in the state of Washington who has filed a hundred and seventy five, approximately a hundred and seventy five lawsuits. And has recovered over a million dollars in the last six years. Uh as as he is making public records requests of different municipalities. Uh and is not satisfied with their responses, so there are those citizens out there. Who are watchdogs, and every community has a different watchdog, uh and we need to be uh aware of them. We need to not treat them necessarily as hostile because they are simply trying to participate in our democracy. Uh and and so. If we can treat them well at the outset and comply with the Public Records Act, we can minimize the risk. That we're going to get sued and have to pay some of these large penalties, we're also seeing an increase. Uh in the amount of attorney's fee awards, I had one case in which uh. Uh the attorney for the plaintiff uh was asking for five hundred dollars an hour. And this is not a downtown Seattle law firm, this is a was a case that was in Skagit County. Um so lawyers are getting more expensive. Uh the plaintiff's lawyers who represent the requesters who prevail in litigation are entitled to their attorney's fees. Um if you lose the case, so it's it's incredibly important to be aware of that. Um the penalties uh have been driven up recently, you can be penalized for failing to give a single record. You can be penalized um based on batches of records and even in the Waits Eastside Gun Shop case. And even in the Wade's Eastside Gun Shop case, they even calculated the penalties based on a per page basis. Because a page of records is defined within the, the definition of a writing. So in the Wade's Eastside Gun Shop case, the Department of Labor and Industries got fined over five hundred and two thousand dollars in penalties. That was in addition to the attorney's fees that the state had paid. And then very recently, there was a case called O'Day versus City of Tacoma, in which the city of Tacoma didn't respond to a public records request. They got sued. Attached to the lawsuit was a copy of the public records request. Well, the city said, that's the first time we ever received this request. But they still didn't respond to it. And months and months went by as they were in litigation over whether they had complied originally. They still didn't respond to the records request. And the judge got very upset with the city of Tacoma. They ended up with a fine of two point six million dollars. And the court said, wait a minute, that's a little excessive. And so they, they vacated that and they sent it back to the court to recalculate a more reasonable penalty. But you can see how judges are getting used to awarding big dollars in public records act cases. Uh, and we want to, we want to not have the city of Lacey's name associated with any of those large penalty awards. Lacey has had its share of litigation. The Bell versus City of Lacey case was, was one which I handled for the city.
Very well aware.
It, it came out fairly well. There were a couple of mistakes that the court pointed out, but for the most part, the city's response was vindicated. A total of twenty-seven hundred dollars in penalties and, and twelve thousand dollars, fourteen thousand dollars in fees to the plaintiff's attorney. So total of about sixteen thousand dollars. But keep in mind, you had to pay me too, so that's where that twelve thousand dollars came out, you know, which is not an insubstantial amount. But you can see how one case costs roughly twenty-eight thousand dollars. And that's a, a great deal of money. And we much would rather have it spent on a, a, a good water system. So. It's always important to keep in mind why we have the Public Records Act and the purposes that it serves. I spend so much time litigating with public records cases. Sometimes you get involved in, in the, the, the small fights that you need to step back and take a look at the big picture. And the Public Records Act was adopted in nineteen seventy-two because people were distrustful of their government. Does that sound familiar? The purposes that it was adopted for nineteen seventy-two are exactly the same purposes that we have in our society today, of the need to build trust with our public. And so when it was adopted and they put in language like this language here about the Public Records Act being a fundamental and necessary precondition for sound governments in a free society. It reminds us that, as another section of the Public Records Act says, we do not yield our sovereignty to the government. The government serves the people. And that's the whole point of the Public Records Act. So what is covered by the Public Records Act? Well, the definition of a Public Records Act, first of all, starts with a writing. You have to have some memorialization of information. And that information has to relate to the conduct of government or the performance of a governmental or proprietary function of government. So it's governmental in nature and it's written. Written is any form of, and these things have exploded what can be considered a writing. Email exploded the number of, of public records that government has to manage. Because our technology, back in nineteen seventy-two, um, when we sent man to the moon and we had computers the size of this room to do it, this is probably as powerful as all those computers combined. So the ability to generate records by our technology has created a tremendous amount of challenges for Alyssa. And the other people have to manage those records, search for those records and produce them when they're requested. But it's those records, those writings that relate to the conduct of government and which are prepared, owned, used, or retained by a state or local agency. The Public Records Act is intended to allow the public to scrutinize agencies, not individuals. Uh, and when you prepare a record, if it's owned, used, or retained or prepared by the agency, that is what the Public Records Act demands be subject to its disclosure requirements. And of course, it's regardless of any physical form or characteristics. Databases, computer data, videos, films, surveillance video. You know, we, we have so much now and the, the capacity to store it, to search it and to retrieve it is really challenged. So what are some of the basics about public records? First, first thing is, is that agencies are not to distinguish amongst requesters based on the identity of the request. You don't treat one class of people differently than another. If you are a citizen in the state of Washington, you have the right to request public records. And it doesn't demand, it doesn't matter who you are. Unless there is a specific provision of law that makes it matter. And sometimes certain people have the right to request records. Like if, uh, if you have someone who has passed away and you want to see an autopsy report, a family member has the right to do that, but the general public doesn't. And then you can't ask about the purpose of a public records request. The people have the right to review records just because they want to see them. The only real exceptions for that is when there's a request for a list of people and you're not supposed to use that for commercial purposes. But that's a pretty limited exception. And then agencies have to provide records unless there is a specific statutory exemption that allows you to withhold those records. So the presumption is to give out the records. And so I always tell city clerks like Alyssa, when in doubt, give it out. What is a valid public records request? Well, when you are making a public records request, you have to request identifiable public records. You have to at least be able to describe it with enough specificity that a government employee can locate the record. If you don't know what it is, how is the city supposed to figure out what it is? And so, um, uh, the case law has, has been pretty clear that you have to give a reasonable description. You don't have to give a title, but you have to describe it. Robin, you had a question?
And this might be your next bullet point, but when the, a member of the public requests a record, the obligation is to provide a record that exists, which is different than providing a record that you would have to create.
It was the second bullet point. And that's exactly right. You have an obligation based on the day of the request to see what exists as of that date and to produce it unless it's exempt. You don't have a duty to answer questions or to respond to requests for information. And you don't have a duty to explain. Um, the Public Records Act doesn't go that far. Now, that doesn't mean you don't explain what's in your public records. It doesn't mean you don't have a, a communication with the quester about what's in those records. But that's up to you because you've determined it's good government to serve and, and to give that explanation. You don't have a legal obligation to do that. And then you don't have a duty to create new records that don't exist as of the date of that request. The other thing that has to happen is they have to alert you that they are making a Public Records Act request. Sometimes requests come in that are allowed by other statutes. For example, unions have the right to ask for information as part of the collective bargaining process. And I understand that Lacey PD has just successfully negotiated a new collective bargaining agreement. As part of that process, the union was, would have asked management to provide records, to provide information about how the employees' costs are, what their salaries are. And they can even, they can even go further than that. They can require you to answer questions and provide information. But the Public Records Act doesn't do any of that. So it's important to understand if the union is asking for something, is it an information request or collective bargaining? Or is it a public records request? We actually had that case come up when the police guild made some public records requests a few years ago. And they unfortunately decided to go to court. We ended up getting that settled very quickly and relatively inexpensively. Because they chose to use the Public Records Act process. They submitted it on Public Records Act forms. They told us it was a public records request and it got dropped, the ball got dropped a little bit. But we solved it, we moved on. And apparently the police guild has a labor peace. So. What happens after you get that valid public records request? The city has a duty to respond within five business days. Now, that is a fairly short period of time. When you respond, the first thing you can do is provide the records. That's the quickest way. And some requests can even be satisfied over the counter, like if I was asking for a copy of my building permit. You can provide an internet address and link to the specific records that are being requested. You'll see a lot of agencies, and I think Lacey has this in a lot of places, that frequently requested records are available online. You can go to it quickly and easily. It avoids having to put a lot of labor involved in having a, a human being responded. People can self-shop, things like your council minutes are online. That's a great way to decrease the level of public records requests and the labor involved. And then you can acknowledge the receipt of the request. And if it's going to take some time, you have five business days to develop an estimate of how long it's going to take. That would, you can seek clarification. And you can deny the request. One of these things has to happen within five business days. So it's incredibly important to make sure that the person who responds from your city clerk's office gets notice of that records request as soon as it comes in. Typically, things will come in through an email or the public records portal on your website. That goes direct to the, to the, uh, to the clerk's office. But sometimes people send things in via email and they're trying to make a public records request and they haven't really done the research to figure out how to do it right. If you get one of those as a council member, send that on as soon as possible to Alyssa and, and so that the city can not miss this five day deadline.
Are, so if someone sends, sends a, a request to my emails saying, please send me every email you've had about a certain subject. Right, but say I am not looking at my emails.
You haven't checked your email for a few days.
I would check my email for a few days. I'm, say they sent it on Friday, I don't check it until after those five days, because it's through, you know.
Unfortunately, it's five business.
Sure, five business days, but say for some reason, I go on vacation. About ready to go on vacation. How, how does that get, is the city still liable if I'm on vacation and I haven't forwarded on?
One, that's why you have rules and procedures in your public records policy as to where and how to make public records requests. If somebody doesn't use that, I think courts are going to give you a little more slack for not having responded within five business days. And, but you, we may ask you exactly, when did you open that email? Maybe there's metadata that, that shows that, um, to show that you responded promptly and within five business days of when you actually received it. But the rules are that you're supposed to make those requests through the online portal, by email, or direct it to a specific person at City Hall, which is your public records officer in the clerk's office. There is some case law that says that if you don't follow the, the process and you know or should know about it, that that's not a, a valid public records request. So that, you don't want to have those arguments. If you get it to Alyssa's office quickly, you're going to be much better off.
Office replies, automatic responses when you're out of office. Obviously, we also have standards in place for staff being able to have access to mailboxes for when you are out for extended periods of times to mitigate that.
Great point. I, I, I'm representing a client right now who did not put a auto response when she went out of town. Um, and by the time she got back and was able to go through her email, we had a public records lawsuit on our hands. So you don't, you want to avoid that and, and letting people know when you're out, out of town is a good way to do that. If you deny the request, you have to give them a statement of what the exemption is and how it applies to each specific record.
Just to emphasize again, you know, if you can remember to put your out of office, you know, automatic applies that you're on, you know, you're available. But also, as I just mentioned, there's that redundancy of being able to.
Can you show us how to do that?
I won't speak for anyone else, but I can tell you in my twelve years on council, I've never put an out of office message on my emails. Well, and some of us, some of us are obsessive because these things work all around the world. I do it in my work, in my work emails, but I've never done it on my city email. I think, so, I don't think I've ever run five days without checking. Public Records Act does not require the city to respond and provide all the responsive records in five days. What it does is it gives you the option to estimate how long you think the whole process is going to take and how long it's going to take to give an installment of records. That estimate of time can be based on a variety of factors. If you need clarification, if you need to search for records, you need to search in multiple locations for records. If you need to search paper records versus electronic searching. If you need to notify people to see whether or not they have a privacy interest that might warrant an injunction against releasing it. If you need to determine if the record is exempt. Sometimes it's not clear on the face of a record if there are exemptions for the entire record or if there are bits and pieces of it that you have to redact. All of those different things factor into how long is it going to take before the quester gets the records? Now, the, the factors that are listed in the statute are not the only ones that can be considered. The amount of staff that it's going to take, whether or not, Vinny List is entitled to a vacation. So those types of, of factors can all be considered in how long it's going to take. And then when you do give an estimate, that's not a hard and fast deadline. Because you've got five days to figure out how many records you have related to a particular subject in Andy's email. I don't know how many that's going to be until I actually do the search. And it may turn out that there's fifteen thousand of them. Then I've got to read fifteen thousand emails and figure out whether any or all or parts of them are exempt. So that's a tremendous workload and it, your, your initial estimate may be off. And so you have the ability to extend that, um, if that's necessary. Uh, and the estimate applies as to when you're going to produce the first set of records. It's not necessarily an estimate of when the entire response is going to be completed. So you try to, try to stagger it in batches so that you're estimating when the next batch is due. When you get a request and it's for all the records about a particular subject, you have a duty to do what's called an objectively reasonable search. And that is looking for records where they are likely to be. You want to identify all the sources of the records that you're searching, all the locations where those records might be located. You want to document all of these things. What methods are you using to search? What are the keywords that you are using, your search terms? So that you can ultimately show to the court that you did everything reasonable in order to find responsive records that are being requested. The test is the reasonably likely to be located. Uh, and did you look where those records are likely to be? Uh, if you don't, that can be a violation of the Act. And that was held in the Neighborhood Alliance case. And the Neighborhood Alliance case was asking for the metadata of a seating chart. Because, uh, they thought that the seating chart showed somebody who was improperly hired. And so they were looking for the metadata, and they went to the, the staff person who created the seating chart, and she had just gotten a new computer. So the metadata on, on her new computer didn't match the data that was created. You had to get the metadata from the old computer, and they didn't go to the IT department where the old computer was sitting. And search for the original metadata. So the court found that they had failed to look where it was reasonably likely to be. And so they didn't, you sometimes have to navigate all these factual trails. And follow the breadcrumbs to, to find that particular record. Lots of different types of records. Um, you have different places you gotta look, emails, laptops, thumb drives, servers, like. Cell phones, even physical paper files. So all of these different places may need to be searched in order to locate responsive records. The, the sort of. Recent issues that the lawyers have been looking at has, have to do with what obligations do we have with respect to our personal cell phones? Now, I'm in a private law firm. I have one cellphone. A lot of agencies issue a, a, a city-issued phone as well as your personal phone. And the reason is, is that it makes it easier to search that city phone, and then you're not supposed to do any city business on your personal phone. That is a, a best practice. Not always the case. Sometimes you will have records related to the conduct of city business. On a personal device. In the O'Neill versus City of Shoreline, that was an, an early case where this happened. Uh, a city council member got an email about an agenda item. At her home email address. It was on her Yahoo account. And it was on her home computer. And so they requested that email and the metadata from that email. And the court support said, just because it's living on your home computer, doesn't mean it's not a public record, and you have to disclose it.
So Jeff, is it good practice then if you do get an email on your, because we do have city-issued phones? So if I get an email on my pri, on my private, you know, my personal phone, one of my personal email addresses, related to city business. Good practice then to advise that person that they should use my city email and forward that email to my city phone?
Yes, that's, that's, that's a, a, a best practice. Because.
I did something, right?
Make sure that you have. That email on a resource that the city can locate and. That minimizes what you have to go through, and we're gonna talk a little bit about the obligation to search personal devices. Because that last case down there, the Nissan versus Pierce County case, was a request for text messages. Text messages are a lot harder than emails. Emails typically, you can sync your city email account. So that it lives on the city's servers. And you may get it on your, uh, on your cellphone, but it, it is searchable and retrievable by your records staff. From the city server. Text messages are different. They live on your phone. Um, there isn't some magic repository for text messages that Verizon has off in the cloud somewhere. They're, they're hard to, to locate if you don't have the device.
And I will note that effect for city-issued cell phones, we do capture all text messages in an archiving software. So if it is city business. Use your city-issued cellphone and it will be captured.
But most of us don't have that software on our personal phones. So in the Nissan case, the Pierce County prosecutor got asked for his text messages. And after the O'Neill case, it was a very small leap to say. That those text messages are public records and you have a duty to produce them. Well, does that mean that you get to seize the employee's cellphone and go through it? Government seizing a private property, doesn't that require a warrant? Those questions were asked in the O'Neill case. And the court said, we're, we're gonna assume that the, uh, council member would voluntarily allow you to retrieve those. Public records from her private computer. But it, so it didn't answer the question. The courts then pointed to the Kwan case. The Kwan case is one that talks about whether there's a reasonable expectation of privacy in. Public records, text messages that were, uh, sent to an employee. And under the policies that were involved in the Kwan case. The, the court said, there's no expectation of privacy. So we get to the Nissan case in twenty fifteen and the court says, you don't have any expectation of privacy in a public record. Even if it's on your personal device. And you have to divulge that public record to your, uh, agency.
This seems like a serious conflict.
It was, and how did, and, and this is how the, the Supreme Court decided to resolve that. They gave us an explanation of how should agencies. Get public records that are on their employees' private devices. And it said, the burden goes on to the employee to search their own device. And we're going to, uh, presume that most employees are gonna be acting in good faith. And that they will produce what is defined as a public record. To the agency so that the agency can then review it and produce it and disclose, um, those pro, public records to the requester. So employees now have a duty to search their own devices. And give the public records that may be found there to the agency. The agency then produces them. Uh, and as part of that process. The agency will ask the employee to, to fill out an affidavit, and the affidavit will verify that they have searched a device. It will verify what they were looking for, that they don't have any other public records on that device that are responsive to the request. And that the remaining, um, items on their device are personal in nature. Um, or sometimes we have a form that says, I don't use my personal device. For any public purpose, I use my city phone, and I've turned over my city phone to be searched by, uh, record staff.
I might be jumping ahead again, but the bullet point number three, where it talks about purely personal records are not public records in Forbes versus City of Goldbar. How does that either align with or conflict with the language in the statute? That talks about what the right to privacy is, and it essentially says if it's not incredibly scandalous or like damaging to a person's reputation, it's considered a public record.
It, it's the difference between privacy in a public record, like a police report. Versus whether it's a public record at all. Forbes versus City of Goldbar was, was, was a, a request that was in the late two thousand ten, or two thousand lots. And it was a request for all of the emails of the mayor of the city of Goldbar. And it was basically a spitting contest between a citizen and the mayor who really didn't like each other. The city of Goldbar at the time did not have a city email system. It was relying on internet-based email. And the mayor had AOL emails. And she, she could access it on her BlackBerry. And she was known to go around emailing on her BlackBerry. She had one account. And we had to shadow copy. All of the email from her AOL account as of the date of the request, and then as of the date of a follow-up request. And then we hired a paralegal to sift through all of those emails. This one is her, uh, shopping, uh, nope. That, that one is, is, this one is an email to Department of Licensing. This is an email to, uh, Department of Community Trade and Economic Development. That, that goes in the public records pile. This is an email to the police department. This is an email to the water system. This is an email to her boyfriend. We had to sift through all of those, and I know way too much about her relationship.
Didn't public records actually like bankrupt the city of Goldbar back then?
Um, it, it came close. Um, the, the city of Goldbar was actually pretty successful because. Things, things like the Forbes case, it said that the city acted properly in gathering all of that and sifting through it. And it relied on the city's good faith in sifting through that to say that this amount of public records. Is correct, and I'm not, the judge didn't even wanna see that entire pile of emails that was purely personal. But we had, we had to, to produce affidavits that said, this is how we sifted through those records. Obviously, you don't wanna have to do that.
Moral of the story is use your city phone for everything.
City phones, use your city email accounts for city business. You may recognize my good friend Arthur West. Um, Arthur has been one who has been looking for social media, uh, posts. Particularly Facebook posts, and there were a couple of cases that he brought, the Vermillion case and the, uh. Uh, West versus City of Pualip case, in which he was seeking Facebook, uh, related posts. Um, in the, the Vermillion case down there at the bottom of the screen, he was asking for information. That was related to campaign sites. Uh, and you're all elected officials. Some of you are running for, for election, and you have to keep your campaign. Uh, items separate from city resources. So there is a, a division in the law between what is personal campaign-related and what is. Public and public records. It wasn't particularly clear back in two thousand sixteen. And so what the, the court did is they said. We're going to have you take a look at the Nissan case and determine whether or not something is created within the scope of your employment. And it remanded to the trial court to say, figure out whether or not these Facebook posts are. Part of the campaign or whether they were created within the scope of their employment with the city. And that was the test that they used in the Pualip case. Um, uh, and this was one, uh, where Councilmember Door, uh, had a Facebook site. It was not campaign-related, but it was personal in which she would put out there to her community. Posts about issues that were coming before the city council. Kind of skirts the line. Is, is that related to the conduct of government? Is it personal or not? And what the court did is they said, we're gonna try to figure out whether it's within the scope of your employment. Is it something that is, uh, directed by your city? Is it something that serves the interests of the city, or does it serve more of a personal interest? And the court in that case found that because it's just one individual council member who wasn't directed to have that site. Uh, that it was more personal in nature than it was city-directed. So it was not the city's record, it was her personal Facebook posts. So, Robin?
Another question. When I haven't read these, uh, decisions, the West versus City of Pualip. Did the concern about a nexus to public employment come into play when they were making that decision? Like, if you recently recognized that someone is a city official. Then does that change the nature of their communications, kinda like off-duty conduct precedents?
Um, it really. It, it, the scope of the employment test that they were, uh, applying there was similar to that. But what they were saying is, does it, um, is it directed by the employer? Is it, um, beneficial to the employer, or does it serve a more of a personal interest? And that's what they, that, that's the test that they were using to try to determine, is it within the scope of the employment? It's kind of like the same test that you would use to figure out, is this something that the city would be liable for if the employee did it? Or is this purely personal? And, and so the Facebook posts in that case were, were determined not to be public records. And, and were, were, wasn't a violation, uh, not to provide them. By the way. They were all still on the internet and, uh, Mr. West did have access to them. But he didn't get them from the city. He went to the internet and got them himself.
So where are we at on the Facebook side? If, if, um, is there a time where Facebook posts from an elected official? Becomes a.
A public record?
Public record.
Absolutely. You have a city Facebook page. Who's authorized to post on that city Facebook page? I would assume the mayor, I would assume city manager.
We all have our own Facebook.
Personal Facebooks.
Yeah, and, and is, a, and, and is that Facebook a city-sponsored Facebook account? Or is it a personal one? And those personal.
There's personal and their city.
Well, the city Facebook account is managed by our Public Affairs Department, and there's no, and nobody has access to that.
No one has access to that, but we do have. Each council member has your own Facebook page, though. Some do. I do.
I do. Like, I have a Lacey City Councilperson Facebook page, which is distinct from my personal Facebook page.
And, and be, because you wanna talk about purely personal things on your personal one, and you wanna talk about.
Yes.
Issues that may come up to the public, so that you're an informed public official.
Yes.
That's kinda like what was at issue in the Pualip case.
Why don't Sharon clarify what the different Facebook pages are?
I wasn't gonna provide a clarification on the, uh, di- different Facebook pages, but I was just going to say that we do have tools. That we use not only for our pages, but also known pages that do capture records on. Facebook pages specifically, and then other social media as well.
Because, yeah, because I get this all the time. Someone, I try to, I, I put on my Facebook, my personal Facebook page, this is the personal Facebook of. Andy Ryder.
It's not the mayor's Facebook.
It's not, and then, and then I have a mayor's Facebook, Mayor Andy Ryder's Facebook page. And so when, and, and, anytime when somebody, someone messages me, city-related, I go. Can you, you message this on my mayor Andy Ryder? This is my personal page.
Right.
So.
And, but even the, even the Andy Ryder is the mayor's Facebook page. That's still very similar to what was at issue in the, uh, in, in the West versus Pualip case. Because that was, um, uh, Councilmember Door's.
Yeah.
Council Facebook page. And, and so.
It's her Facebook.
The post, but it was, it, it was just for her to interact with her constituents. And, and the friends of, uh, Councilmember Door.
Sure.
And, and so the court said that there's not city business being conducted here. You don't have. Uh, other council members interacting. There isn't city business actually being done. It's more of. Let's inform you so that you're an informed public official.
Okay.
And even that was found not to be a public record.
Okay, good. You make me feel better.
That's one of, that's one of the few decisions that, that, uh, has been beneficial to, uh, uh, city officials. So last, what happens after you have done all the searching, you've produced all the stuff off your personal devices? Alyssa's done a reasonable search for all the records, and now we want to, uh, respond. Well. One of the things we have to do is, uh, identify exemptions. And exemptions may be the entire record or maybe part of a record. If it's part of a record, we have to redact it. Um, and then every time we redact or we withhold a record, we have a duty to, uh, explain why we did it. What's the statutory exemption we're relying on? And how does that exemption relate to this specific redaction or this specific document? Uh, and if we withhold it entirely, we have to give what's called an exemption law that lists. All of the specific documents that are withheld in their entirety. And sometimes when you're dealing with attorney-client privilege documents, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be identified. When we are claiming exemptions, you will often see reference to the right of privacy. I think this is what, one of the things that Robin was alluding to. What is covered by the right to privacy? Well, it's things that are highly offensive to a reasonable person. Um, your, your employee's social security number, uh, sometimes your home address and uh telephone numbers, uh, your financial account information, private sexual conduct, medical information. Sometimes you will have public records that discuss these things m- more often about private citizens, their interactions with law enforcement, their interactions with uh the fire department. Uh, all of these things can appear in public records. And if they're disclosed, it would be um highly offensive. I have a, a, a request that I'm working on right now, which is a law enforcement um report dealing with uh, a suicide. And there are very graphic descriptions of the details of the scene when somebody, when the police officers arrived at that scene. Now, most of that description is going to be highly offensive uh to a reasonable person because you're dealing with somebody's mental health crisis. Uh, and, and so would it be highly offensive? Absolutely. Would it be of legitimate concern to the public? In most cases, that private mental health crisis is not of legitimate concern to the public. You're not investigating a crime anymore, you're trying to get help for somebody in distress. So the second prong of the test is whether or not it is of legitimate concern the public.
No question. Yes, um, so in the case where um, you know, it's, it's a piece of information that's available in another public record, for example, at county level. You know, for example, the, the, the Thurston County, I can search a property address and get an address. Uh, or uh, I can get the physical address and get a mailing address. But in Benton County in Eastern Washington, I can search by name. If I put in Kunkel, it'll show me all the properties that he owns. Okay, so now we have uh, if you guys didn't know that. Uh, so now we have one jurisdiction providing, you know, uh, information by name. Another jurisdiction, both of them are providing an address for, for that person, but we're redacting an address because of this potentially. So if, if, how to, does that cross pollinate at all? I'm just wondering because
It, it, it really is a question, I think, of how do you protect somebody's privacy and, and what is it that you choose to have in the forward-facing section of your website? When you have those geo-data sites that list property ownership, when you have county tax records that are available. And most jurisdictions, I think, are moving to the, to divulging more of that information so that names of property owners and what properties they own are gonna be available from uh the assessor's office. So I think then the question becomes, if I have that information in a, in a record, like a police record, is it really protected by privacy that somebody owns that? It's in it where it's available to the public generally, like in the assessor's records. I think the claim that it's highly offensive to a reasonable person is, is a lot less because you, you can get so much information online.
I would also add to that, it also can be the, the same information, but it depends on where it lives in the record. So not necessarily right to privacy, but let's say employee residential addresses and, and personnel documents. My address would be protected. However, if I walk down the street to join animal services, fill out an adoption application and adopt a pet, all of my information is there, whatever I have to provide and my address there should not be exempt because I'm not an employee. So it, it kind of same information, where does it live and what record is it in? Depending on the exception that can be applied.
Could someone come in and ask of where the, where every single council member lives?
Is that an existing record?
Yeah.
Uh, to the city, to the city of Lacey, probably could. Um, your residential address in an employment record for the city of Lacey might be exempt. But I can go to the PDC and get that same information.
Cause as an elected, we have to live within the city limits, so we have to be able to, they have to be able to check that, I guess.
So they can go to the PDC, well, yeah, but some of us put P O boxes in the PDC.
Right, but you still, but I, I think the difference is in an employee as opposed to an elected is because we have to, it, the employees don't have to live within the city limits. But how else do you prove you live in the city limits if you don't provide an address, right? Cause as electeds, we have to live within the city limits.
Voter registration.
And voter registration records are, are who's registered to vote is, is also on a database, vote dot wa dot gov.
Yeah.
So, um, the key thing here is that the right to privacy has to be linked to a specific exemption. Mere embarrassment is not a valid basis to simply withhold it. If, if I don't have a, a link to an exemption, I can't withhold something just because I think it violates a right to privacy. And there are several of those privacy protections in the Public Records Act. Um, personnel information, if disclosure is going to violate the right to privacy, records that are maintained for your employees. Um, that is uh that one and the uh uh law enforcement records are probably the ones that are most frequent. There's also taxpayer privacy. But those are the only three exemptions in the Public Records Act that call out uh an exemption for violation of the right to privacy. It's really uh, uh more limited. Now, there are, it is much more common to say that there are specific exemptions for um various state agencies. You will see tacked on to a lot of le- legislation and a public records exemption for the, you know, the, the Hops Association's record or the Farm Plan or various other specific things that we're requiring somebody to, to work with government about. There, there may be a public records exemption for those. That's more common and there are so many of those. That's why we had a Sunshine Committee that was supposed to review them all and determine whether or not we wanna get rid of some of them. Um, because we wanna promote openness and transparency. So, some other statutory exemptions. The lawyers love um uh this one, it's the controversy exemption. It is those things which are not discoverable under the rules of civil procedure in uh in litigation. It relates to a controversy or potential lawsuit. Covers things like attorney-client privilege. Covers things like patient, physician, or prespenitent privilege. There's even a first responder peer support privilege. All of those things are uh exempt. Uh, the attorney-client privilege actually applies to any attorney-client communication because whether it's related to a lawsuit or not, if it's intended to be a confidential attorney-client communication, that is a standalone exemption as well under the attorney-client privilege statute.
Regardless of retention.
What, what about if we um email our city attorney?
Yes, your emails to the city attorney about legal advice for the city would be within the scope of the attorney-client privilege.
Because we retained him.
Because you've retained him. Just because you're sending uh um uh, something to an, an attorney isn't enough. You have, it has to be your attorney, you have to be uh represented by that attorney a- as part of his professional legal advice. And also there are times when you send things to the city attorney that are not privileged. Uh, and FYI, uh, we're having a city council meeting uh uh and, and we'd like you to uh attend. You know, messages that are not related to seeking legal advice somehow. That is uh outside the scope of attorney-client privilege. Or if it's, or if it's with a, a third party involved.
So a question on that. In our case, the city attorney doesn't represent us, represents the city. Right? So if I'm asking legal advice, there's no, there is no privilege there probably, right? Cause he doesn't, Dave doesn't represent me as an individual.
It depends on whether you're asking for legal advice that affects Lenny Greenstein or whether you're asking for legal advice about the city. The city has a
Lenny Greenstein in relation to the city, I guess, but I'm trying to get, that's what I'm getting at.
If, if, if you're asking for him to advise the city council about something and you as a city council member are requesting that, that, that is within the scope of attorney-client privilege. Because it is a corporate privilege that is between the city of Lacey, which is his client, and you are an officer, an official of.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and never make an assumption that something's privileged. You, we can talk about it before we engage in that electronic recorded conversation.
That's how a phone call works.
Always a good idea to start with a phone.
But then there is also something called work product. That is things which are related to uh litigation and are generated in anticipation of litigation. Contact with your insurance companies, your insurance adjusters, uh, communications with the attorneys who are representing you in that litigation, reports that are prepared, including things that are prepared by non-lawyers in anticipation of litigation. Um, those are all covered by work product. These are things that you may wanna run past your city attorney um when you have questions about. And then if you have uh mediations to settle litigation, that's also exempt under the Public Records Act. So, at the end of the day, what happens if there is a disagreement between a requister and the city about the public records? That's how you get to court, that's why my phone rings non-stop. There are two ways to get to court. First of all is for the wrongful denial of a public record. This is by far the most common public records lawsuit. I asked for a record, I didn't get the record, whether it's because you didn't do a reasonable search or because you're engaging in what's called silent withholding because you just are trying to sweep it under the rug. It's amazing to me how many times records requesters think that's what's going on. What's more likely is either the record does not exist or it exists somewhere where we couldn't find it or we just missed it. Um, but that's, those are, that's the first cause of action, wrongful denial. And then the second way is if that estimate of time that we did back at the start of the process is unreasonable, you can sue to challenge that unreasonable estimate of time and compel the record to be produced in a reasonable period of time. This is far harder for uh a plaintiff to win because you're the one who knows how, what, how much resources you have and the tasks that are ahead of you. And they really have very little information to contradict your estimate of time. I just had a case for the University of Washington. Um, University of Washington has a backlog where there's approximately five million records that need to be reviewed um before new requests get added to it. And, and they are trying to chip away at it, but it's a lot of work that they're gonna have to do. So they were setting out requests six, eight, ten months for their reasonable estimate of time. And we were just successful in defending one that came in last October, which they estimated would be responded to in March. So that's roughly five and a half months. And the court said that that was a reasonable estimate of time, given the volume of requests that the university had and the, the, the number of, of um pages in the backlog. So, that's a much harder uh uh cause of action for the plaintiffs. Um, the agency always bears the burden of proof. It's unlike other litigation where the government gets the benefit of the doubt. Here the requister gets the benefit of doubt. And uh and the law is interpreted most favorably to the requister uh and strictly construed. Um, eh, the court normally is gonna do this by affidavits, so you're not gonna have a trial where you have to sit there and, uh, and listen to the testimony or give testimony. Most of the time, this is gonna be done on affidavits, what's called a show clause hearing. And then the court can also look at the records themselves and determine for, for its own, whether it agrees with you that they are exempt or not. I had a case i- that is pending in, in the Court of Appeals where the trial court reviewed attorney invoices to see whether the redactions were within the scope of the uh work-product doctrine and attorney-client privilege. And the court affirmed that the uh county's redactions were. The other side says, no, i- it was overredacted. And that's the issue that's before the uh, uh, the Court of Appeals. But that's all done on affidavits and what's called in-camera. And then if you lose penalties from between zero to one hundred dollars per day, per record, and we see increasingly large penalties um being adopted. You know, the, the Wade's East Side Gun Shop case was five hundred and two thousand dollars in penalties. Um, the uh uh, uh, there's a case called O'Day versus City of Tacoma, which was two point six million dollars uh in penalties. The court found that that was excessive and sent it back. But i- it's just a, a tremendous liability and we're seeing increasingly large numbers being associated with penalties.
So, in, in the case that you just talked about where they were reviewing a redacted document to see if it was overredacted or not, are they, are they comparing the unredacted and the redacted together? And they're, they're just breaking it down to the actual words that were blacked out?
We, that's what they look at to see whether or not the, the, the ma- material that's blacked out in the unredacted version. What, what, when, when you electronically redact something, you mark it in a red box. And the, we give the court a version that has the red box on it so that it can see what was redacted, but see the words that were behind the black marks. And the court looks at it and determines whether it agrees with the agency or not. Sometimes they agree, sometimes they don't. I had a case in which um Judge Hicks, back when Cork Hicks was, uh, is on Thurston County Superior Court, we claimed a, an entire paragraph was exempt because it disclosed um the location of, of, of people that we thought would be endangered. Well, he took his, he took his magic marker and he said, this is a, this is exempt, that's exempt, that's exempt, that's exempt. And then he read it in court. So the cat was out of the bag and uh um we ended up paying fourteen thousand dollars worth of pen- penalties and attorney's fees because the judge had a finer pen than the city. That happens. And, and so it's part of that narrow construction and, and the policy of openness that the Public Records Act wants us to have.
So the, I guess the only other takeaway about it is the social media. It seems like there's, there is some leniency when it comes to new social media, that you have a social media account and you're talking generally about the city and about them that's coming, and that is no longer considered a public record.
That would not be a public record, the city's Facebook page would be a public.
Sure. That's good news.
So before we conclude, I'm going to, if there's no more questions for Jeff, um, we have our public records summary report that we can quickly Okay. So for our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three public records request summary, um, why are we here? And let me use this section, Jeff. A bit easier. Okay, so the metrics we cover um and track currently are in two thousand seventeen, government agencies that spend over a hundred thousand dollars in staff and legal costs um associated with responding to requests are required to report to the Joint Legislative Audit Review Committee. That's our J L R numbers that we, we send over every year. And uh, those were initially eighteen different metrics and the state legislature later amended it to fifteen. So twenty twenty-two, uh, the city has successfully submitted our J L R report. Our data includes police department numbers as well as joint animal services. Um, some highlights to look at, uh, there was two thousand nine hundred and two total public records requests received. Of that number, eighty-seven percent was for the police department, ten percent for city, and then three percent for joint animal services. Seventy-three percent of the total requests were fulfilled electronically and twenty-three of requests were closed with no responsive records. I'll note that seventy-nine percent of requests were closed within five business days. That is a very large number, I'm very proud of that. Uh, zero claims were filed for twenty twenty-two as well as twenty twenty-one um and zero dollars spent in litigation costs. So our total track expenses for twenty twenty-two uh were ninety-six dollars. Um, as we all know, the, the fee schedule is minimal um in being able to be applied. Uh, and this was actually for one single request, um, but this, this was, um, expense was recovered. So Jeff highlighted um litigation and the cost and how impactful that is for agencies. Looking here, these are the Looking here, these are the total amounts of um, reported litigation costs for all agencies that submit a, a J L R. Um, reports. So over the years, we've got um, anywhere from four point five up to ten million dollars. And so looking at, I think, two hundred and, or two thousand and eighteen, there was two hundred and four agencies that submitted. Uh, reports and then for twenty twenty-two, we had two hundred and thirty agencies. Yes.
Why, why does twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen, I think you had a couple of big awards that skewed things like the Wade's East Side Gun Shop case.
Following on that, uh, um, that impact. Looking at twenty twenty, a city um, in Washington State with a population of just around thirty-seven thousand had an impact of nine hundred and fifty-five thousand. In litigation costs for public records they reported. The following year in twenty twenty-one, they had additionally eight hundred and twenty thousand. So that's two big years. And as Jeff mentioned, those penalties range from zero to a hundred dollars per day for record and are issued at judges' discretion. And they are not covered by agency insurance. So City of Lacey litigation, um, as mentioned, we did not have any claims filed for the past few years, so therefore no penalties or attorney fees. Paid out. Twenty twenty, we did have the one with um. One lawsuit, yes. Um, and so the, the total cost there um, with the penalty, there's twenty-six thousand five hundred and twenty dollars.
And there wasn't anything that was associated with the council at all?
It was not. No, uh, the city prevailed on all but one of the claims and the, the court did deem that the city um, showed no bad faith. Responded timely and was properly trained. So looking at some of the, the records data for twenty twenty-two in comparison to our other jurisdictions. Um, these graphs are kind of small, so I apologize, but um. City of Lacey, uh, in total requests received, um, kind of right in the same ballpark as Olympia and Tacoma. Definitely higher than uh, Tumon or Liquid there, but significantly lower than Renton. Um, looking at the J L R data, the total expenses in fulfilling requests, this is kind of that um, requirement. If you spend over a hundred thousand dollars in staff and, and legal costs uh, being required to report. J L R does not provide a whole lot of guidance in how agencies should gather and identify that data. So um, looking at your employees, their salary plus benefits, the, the amount of time, how many employees are designated for. Responding to public records, um. Every agency has kind of come up with a different uh, way to calculate that metric, but um, I'm wanting to be consistent. Across the board through the years that Lacey have reported, so. If you, I think we are, we actually are right around four hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
Interesting that the cause is about the same level as Lacey, but they spent considerably more than we did.
So just real quick, like when you're, when you have a request and, and you take. I don't know, like. You're, you're, you're working on something and you're like, oh, let me fulfill this request real quick. I mean, I, there's no stopwatch that starts and stops.
The chess one that I start stop. We don't. So Gov QA is our public tracking, uh, public records tracking portal. And that will input um, is a requirement for staff to put in the time that they spent on that individual request. So we do extract all that data, report it to J L R for how many hours spent. In, on individual requests. The total expenses in fulfilling requests um, does not capture administrative conversations with the faculty board, um, trainings. Um, a, a lot of extra time spent by staff fulfilling and um, responding to public records requests. So we do use a kind of almost a percentage um, of our designated staff time. Um, so our clerk's office obviously has designated staff that respond on behalf of the city. Um, as well as the PD has seven staff members that respond for the police department and they have um. Some calculations, some percentages uh, provided every year to kind of offset and we take that and apply it to their salary plus benefits to pull these numbers.
How many do we have on a uh, staff for the clerk's office?
We have three F T As right now, um, who are not filled just yet, so. We're looking at it. So looking at uh, twenty twenty-three, um. So up until October first, this is our, our real life data for our total request received. So we're, we're getting up to kind of. Where, where we've been, um. Reviewing previous years does show complexity is to responding to requests is increasing. Total redactions continue to rise, um, which requires additional staff time. Uh, obviously redacting, creating that exemption log and as Jeff indicated, if you were to have to produce those in court, you keep three copies. You keep the original record, the marked copy for uh, in camera review and then the redacted copy. So that is a lot of. Staff time spent in responding to a request. So if you do have to go back to a request you fulfilled a year later, you have everything in place.
Ha- has, has body cam footage had an effect on your office and, and, and how you get this done?
So I am not in the trenches for body worn camera. Um, I do work with Anna, uh, the police record supervisor and we have. So March of this year, body worn camera did go live. Um, I do see that impacting a little bit. Um, we are working still on figuring out how to best track that data. Um, J L R is not requiring anything, but just for us to kind of tell our story and see what that impact is, that is something that's in the works.
Body worn camera does have some, some uh, specific provisions. First of all, you have to make a specific request or, for a specific incident as opposed to, I want all uh, body camera footage with. People wearing blue. A- a- and in addition to that, when you need to redact it. Unless you are um, using it for a civil rights lawsuit or you are the person involved. You can uh, charge for the cost of redacting the, the body worn camera footage.
Right, video editing.
Um, so, so there is, so there is some more cost that can be recovered uh, for uh, body worn cameras.
So we currently have one uh, public records special, a police records specialist dedicated to the wide worn camera program, doing nothing but. Review, redaction and filling public records requests for that footage.
So some complexity factors. Uh, our data and record sharing, um, obviously over multiple platforms means more areas to search. Um, and knowing which platforms contain what data, so we know what to reasonably apply to our searches. Um, records are often created quicker than we can even apply disposition. So with electronic uh, records, everything is kind of multiplying before we can apply that retention and say, no, we no longer to keep. Need to keep X, Y, and Z per state requirements. Um, having onsite storage for physical records um, creates complexity, especially when we have a hybrid approach to our workforce. If some, some staff are remote, they need to come in and look for records here on site that don't exist electronically. Broad requests. Not a whole lot of extra information there that needed. Um, having sensitive and confidential material, uh, that it's a complexity that we have to cover. So knowing what is sensitive, what is confidential, those exemptions to apply and then knowing where to look and research if um. There's, there's questions on needing uh, additional exemptions. Having outdated systems, um, that don't always play well with our updated technology. How do we access an old platform or get into an old system? And making sure that we are uh, doing due diligence and, and keeping all of those. E- accessible for public records requests. I'm having archiving solutions. We touched on this a little bit with uh, making sure that all of our city issued devices are capturing our text messages or communications. Uh, social media uh, platforms that are used for city issued um, purposes. That is all part of our archiving solutions and making sure that we can go in and reasonably extract data when it is being requested.
How long are we required to keep? Records like, you know, like employer has to keep your W two's for at least four years. There's some.
There are, there are records retention schedules depending on the type of record and depending on the type of agency uh, and, and. They, they are. Thick.
So it depends.
All right.
Some of it, some of them are permanent. Some of them are transitory and get rid of them when you don't need it anymore.
And then another, um, or lastly for complexity, you know, the city is growing exponentially and having um, a lot of new staff come in. Um, with that, we do lose our institutional knowledge with retirements and, and people uh, departing. And so I personally don't know, remember the file for a project thirty years ago. Um, and sometimes, you know, not having that institutional knowledge, we want to make sure we have a real good category of our records and an index of what we have. So that when we do, that we, we know where to find it and to look for it. So some mitigating factor, mitigating efforts from the clerk's office. Uh, we are continuing to uh, provide records training for all of our primary disclosure staff as well as all staff, just so everybody knows what to do when. They get that public records request. Um, updating our public records training for new employees coming on board and just making sure that that is something that um. They, they get firsthand and then continue to receive um, as, as they embark on their employment. Um, encouraging consistent records management, um, best practices. So, you know, not keeping everything forever. If we have it, we are responsible for providing it. So if it has met retention and we can get rid of it and we don't see a business need to keep it. Doing that and doing it consistently will, will definitely mitigate risk. Um, and involving with technology to keep up with our growing demands. And serving as the city liaison for records retention and disposal processes. So all of those um, records destruction. Um, practices that do occur here at the city do get documented on a destruction log and then approved by the clerk's office before destruction is actually made. So with the exception of transitory, we don't have to fill that out for transitory, but we do document. Um, for our records retention destruction purposes. And that concludes. My great summary report. Are there any questions?
Good job, big shoes.
Uh, but I have a question, um. Is. When outside of the city of Lacey, like say, um, we're on committees. Inner governmental committees, like uh, I'm on the.
City Transit.
Inner city transit, right? Or I, I T com, transportation policy board, whatever. Is all communications that happen within that committee considered? Public record or is it just have to do with? City Lacey.
The, the, the question is what is prepared, owned, used, or retained by the agency, by the city?
Yeah. Like, are they all under?
You're using your city email account and it's retained by the city.
Yeah.
Um, and so i- you could request it through the city. If it, if it is um. A, a, a record that is, say, the agenda for inner city transit. Um, that would have to be, it's prepared and owned and retained by this, by inner city transit. Robin might have those, but are. So she might have retained it, but is she, then the question is, is it retained by the agency? And. Probably, probably could get those, um, because she is your representative on that board.
Yeah, so. So what if you're on the board appointed by the city or committee? But then you get off and, but you're reappointed as a private citizen, the board, you know, the. Cause you're a business owner, cause you're.
So you're on TPB because a, as a private citizen. Then the, the TPB. The question is, are they an agency?
Yeah.
Are they a government body? Inner city transit, for example, would be. So, uh, our citizen uh, representatives. Their documents and their communications on behalf of inner city transit. Would be subject to the Public Records Act.
Would the same go for um, visitor convention bureau or?
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce or there's a regional planning council.
TRPC probably is a, is a governmental body, but say Chamber of Commerce is not and you go to that as a, a citizen, even though you're an elected official.
Yeah. Even if you're like Lacey's representative.
The, the question, the question I would have is, is that something within the scope of your employment? Is that something that the city directs you to do? Is that something that benefits the city as opposed to something that you are going to benefit? Yourself as an elected official to make sure that you are aware of what the concerns are of that body. I would think that that is more. Chamber of Commerce sorts of records probably would not be public records. But in this case, we as a council have a represent, so. If I remember correctly, Sid is our representative for the Lacey Chamber of Commerce. He then reports out. To counsel on Lacey.
And the reports to counsel, uh, uh.
Reports out, but not.
And then if there's anything, you know, transferred over through city email to customer council, then that would be captured by the city.
Right.
Think about it like. Who we're representing when we attend a meeting? Are we representing the city or are we representing ourselves?
Yes.
If we're, they're representing the city, then interactions that are written may become public record.
Yes.
And in all capacities, if you're ever with a city council member's hat on, use your city iPad. And do not use your personal device and it, it doesn't, it, it, it doesn't have to be as complicated as we're making it seem. You know, I mean, and it's not something to be feared, it's just something to have knowledge about so that the responses are appropriate.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Then uh, since, since you're here, Jeff, let's go right into the quasi judicial process.
So uh, Jeff has tweeted up the, the slides and base coming up, uh, you know. A couple of months ago, we had a conversation about the uh, uh, the many nail, uh, hearing examiner orders to update its uh. The, the procedural uh, uh, parts of the ordinance and then through that conversation, there was a conversation about having some more discussion about. Counsel's role in quasi judicial. So in responding to that request. Um, since Jeff was going to be here tonight talking about the public record requests, that'd be good, we can ask him to also touch upon. Quasi judicial process, cause as in uh, just capacity at the. Uh, uh, his firm, he also does work in on uh, defending cities through WCIA and, and our insurance risk on land use issues, so.
And, and, and I think many of you may have been here the last time I was here to talk about quasi judicial processes. Um, which WCIA asked me to come and do, so. This is basically an update from that and just. Uh, an opportunity to consider some of the issues on quasi judicial decision-making processes. And what really serves the city's interests best. And that's really what the council needs to uh, consider and decide. This is uh, so, some bullet points from an article that uh, is on MRSC's website. Uh, and it asked the question, should legislative bodies be conducting quasi judicial hearings at all? Um, and they pointed out a, a major concern is risk. Uh, in looking at. Legislative bodies that are comprised of non-lawyer members. Uh, who aren't trained in. Conducting quasi judicial hearings. And in effect, practicing law, that that creates a risk versus having a. Lawyer professional decision maker act as a quasi judicial judge. Uh, or a hearing examiner. Uh, it also pointed out the extremely time-consuming nature that uh. Can take place in the quasi judicial process. Whether it is acting as the hearing body, listening to testimony. Or whether it's just reviewing the record that might be created at a hearing examiner level. There still is a lot of material to review. And. The, the way our, our state law is written, you're allowed to have one open record hearing. Which is when all this public comes and testifies, uh, when uh, the, the applicants present their uh, material in support. Uh, and then there is an opportunity for one closed record hearing. And normally that is an appeal from, say, a hearing examiner does the open record hearing. And there is a closed record appeal. Sometimes the uh, uh, hearing examiner is treated as a recommendation. In which case. The, the closed record is, we're going to review the record before the city uh, hearing examiner. And we're going to see whether or not to follow that recommendation. Uh, but that all takes a lot of time and can be very in-depth and very technical issues. Uh, in the land use process. It also pointed out uh, what they called an untenable lose-lose predicament. And I think we talked about this uh, last time, about how you're in a position because of the appearance of fairness doctrine. Where you are prevented from having open dialogue with the citizens outside of that hearing process. Uh, and that. That puts you in a predicament of trying to be accountable to the public and trying to follow the law about. Having a fair process and follow the appearance of fairness doctrine. Uh so that was another point that they made. Uh it also talked about, and this is, this is a value judgment. What is the best use of your time as a legislative body? Is it considering what is policy, making sure that your codes are clear and articulate what those policies are? And then allowing the land use professionals and professional staff to implement those codes. Including making quasi judicial decisions. Tovar's article suggested that maybe the best use of council's time is to act as policymakers. Rather than as policy implementers.
Are there any exceptions to the ex parte restrictions?
The 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 way the appearance of fairness statute is written. Is that the rule is that you are not to have ex parte communications outside of the hearing process. With either uh proponents or opponents of a proposal. You're to base your decision making on the the hearing record and the testimony that comes in as part of that hearing. Um there are mitigation measures in case that doesn't happen. Uh and but the mitigation measures are really. Trying to deal with exceptions and and are and are not part of the rule. The rule is no ex parte communications. So um this is, this is a slide that I think I showed you several years ago, uh and it talks about. Liability traps for the for for the unwary. Um and and for city councils and. The case law that has been established is pretty clear that community sentiment is not the basis for deciding. Land use issues. A- and and some of these cases going back to the to the early eighties um have clearly held that. I had a more recent slide of that that dealt with um. The Maytown Sand and Gravel case, which is another one where community sentiment and. Considerations other than the impacts uh under the code. Uh were the drivers behind the decision and that resulted in multiple millions of dollars of liability for Thurston County. So the general consideration is that community opposition, community sentiment. Is not the driver. The driver is instead of the impacts. Uh and this is some uh some additional uh case law that talks about the role of community sentiment. In quasi judicial decision making and specifically in uh considering special uh use permits. Or conditional use permits. The Sunderland Family Treatment Services was a a halfway house proposal in Pasco. Uh and the court said while you can give the opposition of the community. Even substantial weight, that community opposition alone can't justify a local land use decision. It talked about when you have uh not adopted specific standards. But sort of have a general standard of in the public interest promoting public safety and welfare. Um the decision making body bears a higher burden to justify its decision. And that the usual presumption of reasonableness of the land use decision doesn't attach. When you have more general standards. And then to follow that case up, you have the Hanson versus Shalane County case. Um this was another one where they talked about a special use permit and. Comparing the impacts of a proposed special use permit with. Things which were permitted outright in that district and the rule that they articulated in the Hanson case was that your. Impacts for a special use have to be more than the impacts that you would have. From a outright permitted use in order for you to deny that permit. Um and then. Mister Starbucks. Couple other cases to be aware of uh. The Warehouser versus Pierce County case talk about when you are considering uh land use proposals. That you have to have written findings on all the key decision points as a basis for your factual determinations. And that allows the court to have a record that it can review. And then um. I think the general summary of the rule is that impacts on the local community are a valid basis. To make conditional use permit decisions. But community dis- displeasure with a proposal alone is not, you really have to focus on those uh impacts. And that was the case in a a a twenty twenty-one decision that was in uh the city of Redmond. It had to do with um. Uh an adult care facility uh that was being proposed um. For a couple hundred units uh in in a uh. Uh in adult fam- and not an adult family home, but it was a uh.
Residential care facility?
Residential care facility. And uh and and so. It had the neighbors up in arms and the and actually the the uh homeowners association in that area was opposed to it. But what they couldn't do was they couldn't point to uh impacts on the local community. They were simply trying to say that, well, it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, it's not compatible with our single family neighborhood. Uh and and the court said, well, we really don't think you've approved that um. And so uh what you're really doing is voicing a community displeasure with having. Of this large residential facility in your single family neighborhood. Uh and the the zoning allowed that type of facility and and contemplated a a variety of housing types. So um uh the the court then approved that. Back this one. So um. I think it's appropriate to think about what is the council's. Proper role and how does uh the quasi judicial role constrain your actions? And um you have limited discretion to consider the community's desires. At the quasi judicial decision making process. In the legislative process, when you are writing the rules. You have a much greater uh basis to uh uh consider what the community wants, what the local demands are. Um whether or not you should rezone property or. Uh what the what the appropriate zoning designation is for a any particular area within the city. That's that that is a legislative decision um and and you have a lot more freedom to co- consider community sentiment. And then we talked about how ex parte communications get are are limiting and you're really constrained in having um. Uh open communications with your constituents. Um that can happen a lot more freely when you're dealing with legislative decisions. Because the appearance of fairness doctrine only applies to uh quasi judicial decisions, it doesn't apply in the legislative arena. And then. You you have to ask yourself, how does the council consider? Uh the hearing examiner's decision, is it a recommendation? Do you have to go through and? Reevaluate all the factors that your hearing examiner has done in order to determine whether to agree with it or disagree with it? If if you treat that as a recommendation, you get to substitute your judgment for that of the hearing examiner, but that burden means that you're gonna have to be. Looking at the entire record and all those details that you've already hired the hearing examiner to do. If it is an appeal decision. You you're looking to see whether or not he understood the facts and was relying on what's called substantial evidence. Which is a little more deferential review to your hearing examiner's factual determinations. But then you also have the ability to uh to say, we think you misunderstood the legal. Principles that are in effect here. And then the other question is, should you simply rely on the hearing examiner's determination? Uh this is, this is, I think, the more common uh approach that uh. Most municipalities are taking to the hearing examiner process. And that is to have your your professional hearing examiner, who is Andrew Reeves. Um and that's a picture of him presiding on a case in Clallum County. Uh he's also City of Tom Waters uh hearing examiner, he's a very good hearing examiner. Um do you want to rely on his professional judgment and have that appealable to a superior court directly? I think that has become the most common way in which the land use process uh is is being adopted. It certainly is the way that. Uh Olympia, Tom Water, and Thurston County all are are set up.
So Jeff, so there's actually three options, and what you're saying, I I I think it's I missed, I thought there were two. So there's what we do currently, where hearing examiner is a recommendation to council, right? That's what it is now. There's one where we act, where we're where it's not a right, it's a decision, but it can be appealed to council.
It can be appealed to council. Then you consider, then you consider the closed record appeal.
It's still the closed record appeals, it's still the ex parte communications.
Still have a quasi judicial restrictions.
Should the council rely on the hearing examiner's decision? That decision would be final and it would be subject to a Lupa appeal, Land Use Petition Act appeal to Superior Court. The city could be a litigant appealing the hearing examiner's decision. If the hearing examiner renders a decision that city staff or the council disagrees with, the city then can take a role in appealing that decision. So it doesn't, it doesn't die best.
I I I just had a case which was before Mr. Reeves, I for City of Tom Water. That was had to do with undergrounding of utilities. And he disagreed with staff's reading of the undergrounding policy and he agreed with the applicant. We had to decide whether or not to appeal his his ruling. We ultimately decided not to, but I very well could have gone to the next step. And appealed to Superior Court.
We can actually appeal the hearing examiner decision.
Council does rely on it, but isn't beholden, I mean, has has a a means of redress if it feels it was an incorrect decision.
Just like get either side, either party could, they appeal into court so can wait.
The middle land use appeal process is set up. With with the hearing examiner. The hearing examiner is going to be the one who does the labor intensive uh effort to sit through the hearings. Have the public come and testify. He's gonna be looking at the witnesses, deciding who is knowledgeable, who is less knowledgeable. What the experts have to say, and he's gonna sift through all these complicated land use issues, cause that's what he normally does. And then he's gonna make a a decision of some sort. That may go to city council, it may not, may go. In any event, it's going to be appealable to Superior Court. I have a question. So the hearings examiner is in.
Basically like an underwriter. Uh because they're underwriting the file to see that it meets all the guidelines um and regulations that that have been set forth in in all the ordinances. So oftentimes in underwriting, um you have a second underwriter who does what we call a second touch, right? Uh and what they do is they 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 second touch the file, make sure, hey, you know what, you you didn't miss anything, whatever the case may be. Uh some oftentimes some, uh like an audit, yes, second set of eyes. Do we, do we not have that option?
Actually, actually, you already do, because when something is presented to the hearing examiner, it first goes to your professional staff. And they write a staff report that has a recommendation to the hearing examiner as to what they believe ought to be the decision. And the hearing examiner's review is a second. One one thing, if if I hadn't mentioned it, was uh in dealing with uh. The the process, should you rely on the hearing examiner? Uh WCIA uh has taken a a pretty clear position that that is their preference. And they think that that is the the um uh most risk averse approach that a a city could take.
Thank you. Um I just wanted to point out that actually we're not making a recommendation necessarily, we're providing our analysis. So that is that first underwriting piece, we're we're reviewing the application against the code. And giving our analysis to the hearing examiner, who then we have to make our case, just like anybody else would.
You just said that relying on the hearings examiner's recommendation is the recommended position of the WCIA.
Yes.
That's a decision.
To have to have the hearing examiner be the final decision maker, subject to appeal to Superior Court. You can't, you're never gonna get away from that.
The people that elected us.
This, you deal with the people elected. You always are going to have the role of being the policy setters. And deciding what the codes should say. And if you think that the uh uh the court was ultimately wrong in how it. In ultimately interprets your codes, you always have the right to change those codes.
After the fact.
Or after the fact. It may not apply, it may not apply in that particular development proposal. But for all the other ones, you can always change that code.
But even on that one, if you felt, if the council felt that they weren't, that the hearing examiner wasn't applying what we meant in the code we wrote. We could still appeal it to the court.
I like those options a lot better.
But regardless, the land use that was formed whenever the last body did it, so it could have been. You know, or per se for us.
For the marriage part, and we've have been doing that process, we've been now looking at the neighbor commercial zone, we're on it. Right now, it's a very important step of doing our twenty twenty-five conferencing plan update, which should be followed right. Uh after that, immediate with the implementation ordinances implemented, so getting everything current and and according to council. So I I know with this presentation again, and I know we had this uh conversation several times over the years. Um you know, just to check with council, council, see if you want to, you know, direct staff to move forward with a particular direction or uh.
Want my opinions? I I think we should do the, well, the hearing examiner that we can appeal to Superior Court. Well, I think it's the only one because we can talk to our constituents.
Yeah, I I've been opposed to that for different reasons, but I've come to that same place on this one.
I don't know, wait, you have a member of the public, we usually don't take testimony, but you have.
And I feel personally involved with this particular matter that I think is on the top of everyone's mind. It was the Meridian Market gas station, very controversial decision. And I had the opportunity to meet with all of you personally, I had a phone call with Andy. That was not as productive as I had hoped it would be, uh but I think it was not that. Citizens who were arbitrary in capricious as Card versus Skagit County defines, it was the city council unfortunately, and I don't. Um expect everybody to have read every element of that particular record, it was extensive. It took me literally two weeks and I'm a pretty voracious reader. Um and it was quite involved, so I respect your point in that uh. This gentleman, I can't recall his name, but that he uh, that's his job, and so he's professional in that regard. But in this case, that hearing examiner made a recommendation with a footnote. That to my knowledge, six of you did not read and that footnote spelled out. That our conditional use Lacey Municipal County language had three parts to it. One part of that was citizen acceptance, another part was compatibility with neighborhood. And the third part was local economic demand. He felt that he could rule in the favor of the, in his words, full-throated. Citizen opposition, and it was more than the fifty people here in this room. It was well over four hundred people participating in that hearing. And none of you read that. That was the biggest disappointment to all of us. I'm one person. Sitting here tonight expressing my personal opinion. Sitting here tonight expressing my personal opinion. But that personal opinion almost cost me twenty-five thousand dollars. When I contacted Mr. Myers Law Office, he couldn't represent us because he does work for the city. I didn't speak to you personally. But that was our experience with Cascadia and others. We had to go to Seattle to get our legal advice. And it was then my decision, do we take a vacation after COVID restrictions have lifted? Or do we appeal this? Or do I personally try to have a conversation with all of you and say. This recommendation spelled out an option for you that you didn't even consider. Because you didn't read the footnote. I've already expressed, I'm not gonna scold. It, it's not my intention to publicly humiliate. We all have overwhelming responsibilities. In our personal and professional lives. I don't really have a vested interest in whether you remain in this role or not. But to assume. That you wanted to engage with the public. And you didn't because you didn't read the record or the recommendation. To assume that Mr. Stedman who wanted to participate on the day of the hearing and was advised by somebody. From the city that he couldn't participate. That seems, i- i- are, are council members able to listen in on the hearing? That would have been a pretty efficient way to get through quite a few things that were, uh, written. It, it just struck me that that whole process was farcical, was riddled with error and ripe for improvement. And so I've written all of you many times, I questioning whether you've read my emails. Um, I'm questioning whether right now you have read the volumes of citizen input on these. Neighborhood commercial zone forums and the, um, meetings that have happened. I'm questioning and I'm just asking you to please, if you're gonna say you're gonna represent us and you want us to participate. Then please do, do, especially when we're communicating in such, um. A prolific way. Thank you.
Well, I, I think this, um. Think this reason, um, in particular. Um, there's a, there's a, there's a, this whole legal question where that she brought, that she brought up. Where there is a council could have made a different decision during that. I think the, the council followed the, the legal obligations of, of that whole process.
Have you read the footnote, Mr. Ryan?
Yes, I have. Absolutely. And we, and we, and we. We discussed that footnote as i- is that a reason for us to deny it or change it? And we got the legal opinion that it wasn't, and that's why that's counsel.
That conversation with Mr. Snyder. But when I had a, a conversation with six of the individuals individually, they'd not seen the footnote.
I don't think so.
I did not say everybody had not read the footnote. That did not happen. That was not said.
No, that's not.
But I, I've also, um. We've had this conversation many times of, does this council stay involved or not stay involved in this? And I've always. Gone in favor where I felt like it was council's responsibility to look through the record. Make sure that we are. That the hearing examiner gets it right. I think what's changed a little bit in, in my calculus is all this is, um. Is when a, a issue like this comes up and there is obvious, um. You know, uh. Citizen who's are, are against it. You know, yeah, uh, that it's becoming more and more difficult. To say, sorry, we can't talk to you. This is a whole ex parte. So we can't talk to you at all. This is a closed record. I have to wait till the final. And then again, to expect every single council member. To be at a stage where they've gone through and, and have read every, every, everything and is making an informed decision. And, and then, and several times we've gotten through these controversial situations and council members have recused themselves for one reason or another. And so it's like we were losing. The one thing that I was holding on to was, was expecting that the elected official has the ability to do all these things. And what I'm finding is, is in some cases. That hasn't come, come true. And so I've always been in favor of the council member being the final. Person to make this decision, but I've, I, I have also walked this back now too. Because I haven't seen the system work. My, my one caution, my one worry about this, and I, and I brought this up. Is what I think unfortunately may happen if we go to this system is now that we, we will have the ability to talk to the public.
Until we can't be much.
Right? And it's, it's gonna be pretty politically expedient to agree with everything the public is saying. Even the public may be right, we're wrong. Right? And we can say, you're absolutely right. What a dumb, dumb reason to. Agree with this, right? But it doesn't change anything. So all we're doing is having pol- politicians. Act politically in favor of their own rear end, you know, to, to s- side, side with the public when it doesn't change a dang thing. You go back to slide. And so that is why I've almost put their, their mum, all, all, all of us. And not put staff through that. Because that's what's gonna happen is, is the elected officials are gonna be, I believe, be upon staff.
The only thing I would add is, cuz I, I've been in the same place as you on this one, Andy, since the beginning. Um, however. I, I don't think we're, we're saving staff from any of that the way it is right now anyway. Because when we tell people we can't talk to them. So I don't think the way we're doing it is actually accomplishing what we would like it to accomplish, which was keeping the burden on us as electeds. Instead of passing that burden on the staff, I don't think we're actually accomplishing that anyway, which is part of why I've changed my stance on it.
And the other, the other part, if I can just add in there too, is you have more opportunity to talk with the constituency. But you also have more opportunity to get more information about the project, the application. Talk with staff, getting, you know, information, find out where they're sitting to. So it, it's overall.
What gives me comfort in this whole scenario is the fact that we can challenge the decision after the fact. Uh, which if we find it something, if actually, yeah, staff's really wrong on it.
Being able to engage with the community on specific projects also means that we can talk to the community about their interests. In land use zoning policies in the future. Like, we're having that conversation now.
Yeah.
But neighborhood commercial, but I would prefer that we could have had it even sooner. Which we were sort of barred from having because it came up because of the Meridian Market and some of the other decisions we made last.
Well, I. I made a motion to restrict convenience stores in future neighborhood commercial things and it failed, but that was a solution. Because it was, I mean, there's what, four or five other properties could do this and they're, they're not even. Have enough square footage to do it, but. On the face value is, hey, at least I was heard and I was listened to and that kind of deal, so.
Well, like I said, I've. I, I, like I said, I felt like it's, it should be our burden as elected officials. You're right, recently, it hasn't, it's. It's been just as much staff's burn as, as our burden, so I, you know, I, I'm willing to change my mind on this too. I've, I've felt a lot better if during this last two controversies, if. The council, the, what, we, we wouldn't have issues where council members were accusing themselves. That's, that meets the whole dang purpose of us.
Particularly the one that we've been talking about, the one that was the concern with Meridian Market. We were down to four council members tonight. That was, um. Extremely uncomfortable. I made the decision by four of us rather than seven.
Anyway, it's a lot easier to get to two as compared to getting four out of seven, yeah. You know what I'm saying? So.
So I, I, I guess, I guess. Yeah, I guess what this council's saying is, is bring a ordinance in front of us for consideration.
May I ask Mr. Meyer a question? In your documenta- or in your presentation, I didn't hear about the rule of necessity. And that's what Lenny's speaking about. We weren't sure if we were gonna have a forum that night.
A- a- and if, um, if appearance of fairness doctrine results in a disqualification of a quorum. The rule of necessity allows the body to consider it. Um, by reinstating the people who are disqualified. Um, it, it is. Something that is ordinarily, you try to avoid that. Um. But, but that is, uh, involved in the, in the appearance of fairness statute.
No, we still had four, so we didn't have to go there.
Goes with a, a decision with that cloud of the ex parte communication on, to itself. It's a challenge. It creates another layer of issues.
Okay. Well, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. I'll just, and I will call this meeting adjourned.